This time I'll call the meeting to order if we could have roll call.
Mr. Holden.
Present.
Mrs. Gatos here. Mr. Chiuello.
Present.
Mr. Kunka.
Here.
Mrs. Kilmartin here. Mrs. Krutan here. Mr. Menotti.
Here.
Dr. Ritter here. Mrs. Yorich here. We're pulled for it.
Okay, fine. At this time, if we could please rise and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, can I add something to the agenda, please?
What do you want to add?
Under unfinished business, I'd like to entertain a discussion in a possible motion to get the mid-year evaluation for our superintendent done. Looking through my notes, I noticed that that was supposed to be scheduled, but then we had all that bad weather and a lot of events that were unforeseen.
I don't know that we need to have a discussion item on that per se.
Okay, we need to, a day thing.
It just needs to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Would anybody care to make a motion?
Senator.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Presentations and recognitions.
Yes, thank you very much. It is a great honor to continue our practice now, our new practice of recognizing an educator who is an innovative educator. We have many of them in the district and it's always hard to choose, but tonight it was, it is a great pleasure to introduce to you, the board, and to you, the staff, and parents, et cetera, and students who are present, a very talented educator, Keri Yatowicz, the Sheldon Innovative Educator of the Month of March. Please step forward and let's give her a warm welcome. And I would just say a few words and also her principals here to add some accolades. She is a great example of what it means to be a 21st century educator. Smart, caring, very creative, always willing to go down to get the job done. It's a great pleasure to work with Keri and I can't keep up with her, but she's going to do a presentation tonight and let's have Amy Yosher, principal, say a few words as well.
I'm from the literary room from your own education. Really, I can go on to talk about Keri, but she's such an asset to Penn State School and to the Sheldon Public School System. Her creative, innovative ideas, the 21st century, just spurred so much learning in our building. She is a phenomenal collaborative partner with all of our colleagues. I can't think of more enough for giving her to us the whole year, every day. It's really allowed us to expand and work a little bit more within classrooms and the co-teaching model that we have here, getting set with our Genius Hour, which you'll hear a little bit about, really helping in the coaching aspect with our staff and really getting them more comfortable with technology and trying more innovative ideas in the classroom. I'm just trying to catch my breath. But she does, this is Keri all the time. She has a smile, her energy, it sparks the kids. They always want to go into the light, into the learning commons and lots of new ideas. The kids that are sparked, they can their own ideas, but they want in that space to kind of explore and just be creative and stick their hand a little bit.
And she makes it easy.
Oh, yes. And she's always doing something with Donors Choose, everything new and fun things in the library. She stepped on many times the garden that she put together with our kindergarten students and doing their real units right now, so I'm just so happy and proud of her. And she has some staff members who are there.
And perhaps you'd like to ask your loved family to stand in the room?
Oh, yes. My children and my husband.
I have a little slide show to show you.
Okay. Time for those of us who don't like bright lights or I will move.
All right, so we've been working really hard to transform the library area into more of a learning commons and I think by seeing these slides, you'll get a really good idea of what that means. So we have a space in the back of our library that's called the Maker Space and in that place, they can do some engineering. We have Legos through a CEAF grant that I wrote and we just got that make-do kit up in the corner so kids can actually build with cardboard. I have a little boy who came to the library and he just said, "I want to build a fort." He said, "I want to build a fort." And it's kind of part of the Genius Hour that we're doing, so we had gotten these tools for him, so now what he's going to do is research forts, how they're built and all that kind of stuff on safe sites and then we will have the tools that he needs to kind of put it all together and he'll make his little fort. And we also have, on the bottom, we have the Legos. Last night, I got an email from Donors Choose and they said to watch the Stephen Colbert Show because they were going to make an announcement and I had something on Donors Choose, the Kiva Planks and Royal Co. straws, which are for building. And when I woke up this morning, I really felt like it was Christmas because I'm like something good happened when I was sleeping because I go to bed at like 8:30. So it was like way past my bedtime, but I did record it too, so I will watch it. But this morning, I ran downstairs and I got on the email and my project was funded by Best School Day, Stephen Colbert, and they all got together and funded a lot of projects on Donors Choose. So it's really wonderful. In the month of December, we do the Hour of Code. A lot of kids go on code.org. We introduce them to programs such as Scratch and Lightbot and because there are so many computer programming jobs available, it's such a good way to get them involved in that. I went to a conference at one time and the girl had said she was one of the only ones when she got out of college where people were looking for her and they went and recruited her for a job and she said a lot of her friends were looking for jobs, but this is really, I try to get my kids involved in code and computer programming so that they can enjoy it. And they really loved, this year, they could code the Google logo, so if you go onto Google, you know how they have a different little picture every time, so the kids got to actually code their own, which was kind of neat. And all of that coding leads to the robotics part of the Maker Space that we have. They have a Dash robot where they can program him to do different kinds of moves and things like that. He has, we just purchased a xylophone for him so they could code the robot to actually play a song and to, we brought a launcher so he can launch something, but we will have to have rules about that in the library. And we also have Ozobots, which is down in the left-hand corner, and we brought those to a meeting last year, I believe it was, and you got to see the kids present those and it's just, they could program with the markers or they can program on the computer, which is really great because the block code that they're learning, you attach the commands together, it really does, they're amazed at how they can make the robots do exactly what they want it to do. And we have, we also have electronics-type kits where we have the snap circuits and little bits where kids can figure out basic electrical type of connections. And we have a Code and Go mice, which is another, it's more of a primary one. I don't have a picture of that one, but it's a little mouse and you press the top and you tell it what you want it to do and you could see it. This is more kindergarten, first grade, but I mean, they're learning that if you tell the robot, "Go forward, go forward," in turn, it's going to do what you tell it to do. And sometimes they might have it bump into something and they have to debug it and figure out a way to fix the program, so we introduced them to that vocabulary also, the computer vocabulary. I, the Storm students that we have at our school, the student team of role models, I kind of oversee that program and they have created these TNN reports. And TNN stands for Tiger News Network and they report on things like recycling in the community. We actually reached out to the department with recycling and they, we had a bunch of questions to ask them, they got back to us and the kids reported on it. They were also interested in Beardsley Zoo, so we reached out to someone there and they were, they were really happy to get back to us. They said they would Skype with us if we wanted to, so that was another report. And they report on basic things like behavior, how you're supposed to behave in the, in the school. So there are a lot of good stories. They choose the stories, we kind of create a list of stories that we want to report on and then we choose a couple each time. We have volume one, volume two, and right now, we're working on volume three. Video production is a big part of communication, getting, kind of sharing what we have, what we're learning with other people in the community. So I have a YouTube channel and we present, there's videos on there about assemblies. We did a stop-motion video, which is up in the corner here, the big thing's blocking it, but the kids actually took iPads and they took pictures of all the parts and you can see how the lava is coming out the top of the rock there, but they named each part of it. I did a video for the Shelton Tech Fair, there's a lot of different videos, but the fun part is when they actually get to create their own videos. I worked on them from, with second graders, third graders and fourth graders and it's amazing, even second graders, they're like, "Well, I don't want this part in there." So I taught them to actually, you know, cut the video and they put music to it, "I want a transition," and they learn all of, all of this stuff, so they're really creating their own videos with titles and music and editing it, so it's, it's really fun. I also collaborated with a phys ed teacher and we've been doing fitness videos, like fitness tips, where he's been showing them how to do push-ups. We also had a jump rope one, so we're working together to kind of get it out there, the fitness aspect to stay healthy. And we work a lot with the green screen, too. We had created some photos last year to get the kids to read over the summer, so the staff kind of got in front of the green screen and we all took pictures with our favorite books and where we wanted to go to over the summer, so everybody could kind of see every, getting the message out there that no matter where you go, make sure you're reading. And then the top part, we do a lot of green screen with our announcements and the videos that we make within our school, the math specialist also has a video, we include her in the announcements every week. And the kids up on the top row were doing a special art announcement where they created these imaginary creatures and I worked with the art teacher and we collaborated to kind of decide what we wanted to share in the announcements about that. And the daily announcements, basically what it includes, I have a couple of anchors from fourth grade and they come up and they sit in front of the green screen and read a script and I'm just going to play it. The volume is off, so you'll just be able to kind of see what happens. So the students say the pledge and the school song and after that, they talk about Tiger Pride and we always talk about the word of the week and the character word of the month at Sunnyside and they always give us an example of what the character word of the month would look like. And at the end of that, we always have special announcements, what's happening that day or, there's our little pledge. And those are the Storm students. They were, every week, it's a different class that is featured. And when I first went in and I started to take the videos of the classes and they saw me coming with the camera, they're like, "It's us this week." They were so excited about it, so it was a lot of fun. They could see how the green screen, you could pretty much put any picture in back of it. And just some examples of the collaboration that I'm able to do. I see the kids weekly during their learning commons time, but I also have flexible times and I, in those flexible times, I'm able to schedule teachers to do, to come in with me and we kind of co-teach where they have the content knowledge of what needs to be taught and I do the technology piece. And it, it's great because I'm able to kind of coach them with some of the technology that we have, so they get to learn it along with the kids, some of the little features that they might not know in Google Docs or Google Slides, but they're able to learn it along with the kids. We also did, like I said, the video editing. I worked with grade four this year, we did some of the Invention Convention lessons together, some of the activities that they had to do. And now I'm working with the guidance counselor on some career videos that we're going to be showcasing the week of, the career week. So what we're going to do is we have people right now videotaping themselves at their jobs, so the kids could see them at their place of work if they can't make it in. A lot of times, we do have people that are able to come in, but she was saying how if they're not able to, why, so we could Skype them or they could pre-record a video and then the kids could watch it again and again if they'd like to. And again, the second grade artists were featured in the daily announcements, so at each day, there was a different artist that kind of came in to the daily announcements to talk about their imaginary creatures. This is something we're also starting at Sunnyside, along with the fitness videos, we want to make sure kids are eating healthy also. So the first video on top is Mrs. Yost and she is talking about making sure you're eating all kinds of vegetables and fruits and so that's that tiger paw one. And the video underneath is my daughter and I in my kitchen making tomatoes and mozzarella, which is like a great healthy snack and it's very easy, so we're just trying to show them that there's really easy ways that you can eat healthy. And this is called a smore, so it's a flyer that you send home and I could keep adding to it as the videos come in, I could keep adding to the bottom of it and then the kids will be able to watch them and get some pretty good ideas for healthy alternatives. In the library, where I'm also collaborating with kindergarten to do some planting, last year, I got a CEAF, I was awarded a CEAF grant to order grow lights, so right now, I realize the kindergartners are planting tomatoes and the other, the other class is planting basil. I must have something with the whole tomato kind of, mozzarella, basil, I don't know, maybe I need to start at like an Italian restaurant or something. But I, I really got the idea for growing when I brought my plants and those are the ones on the left. I had a patio plant at home and it was getting cold, but Sunnyside is, the library is nice and warm and there's this big beautiful window that I could put the plants in front of and have them keep growing. So the kids would love it. They would come in and I had peppers and we'd cut them off and they, some of them would bring them home and I'm like, "Put them in your eggs, they're delicious." So they'd bring them home with them. We, in the learning commons, another fun thing that we do is a, it's called a breakout box. It's kind of like a mystery room where you try to, instead of breaking, like a mystery room, you try to break out, you try to unlock all the locks on the breakout box. So I did one with the American Revolution, which was really cool because there is a standard that says people are, people benefit and are challenged by working together through government workplaces, volunteer organizations and families. And through the breakout box, they were really able to see that when you work together, you can get more accomplished. Some of them would try to go off on their own, but they saw that you really had to have all the pieces of it in order to solve the puzzle. And then the one on the code, the breakout box picture on the left on the bottom is Sunnyside. They just did that one the other day. They broke into a, they had to break into the box and they had to solve code, basically algorithms that I had hidden around the library. And so they had to like put all the pieces of the puzzle. It's really just, it's great thinking. They had to like really work together, think together in order to get it completed. And I'm doing it with Mrs. Kraus's class tomorrow morning and I told them, I said, "It took you nine minutes and 47 seconds you had left on your timer." I said, "Do not tell Mrs. Kraus's class," because I was worried that they would tell them. I said, "Because her class might get it done faster." And so they were, they are all quiet about it now. We also do some virtual field trips on discovery education. They have some really great view, like they had a Martin Luther King virtual viewing party where this was at Mohegan. I had the kids come in, they actually came in during their lunch, so you could see they have their lunch trays in front of them because the virtual viewing party was at 1:00. So everybody kind of goes online at the same time and we all view this, the, the show that they have. And people are commenting on Twitter, so we could kind of be seeing what the questions are and the people who are in the viewing party will be taking the questions. And the kids were great because they, they get to ask the questions too, so I put them on Twitter and see if they answered our questions. We also did Innovation Inspired by Nature, which was really great because it went well with the Invention Convention unit that we were doing. It kind of talked about how they take things that they see in nature, like the sticky part that they had a, like a Velcro in nature and that's how they got the idea for a Velcro or the sticky part, they get the idea for a Post-it note. It was pretty cool. And then we, we could also, we have a virtual field trip with an author. There are authors out there that like to Skype too, so that's kind of one of my next things that I want to do, be brave enough to Skype. I have a website that, when I was getting my cross-certification in Library Media, I started putting it together because I was getting so many ideas and I didn't want to lose them, so this is my toolkit, I call it, and the kids are able to access it from home and it gets about 1,000 visits, over 1,000 visits a month, so the kids not only use it in the classroom, they love using it at home because they know it's a safe place they can go to and all of the links on there, like on the left-hand side, in each of those pages, there are links that they can go to that are safe for kids. So I kind of teach them to navigate through it and a lot of the things that I do within my, the learning commons, I include on those pages, so they can revisit them later. I also do have done professional development within the district. One of my favorites was using the flip grid, which is the one up on the right-hand corner and then Padlet, which is the one on the bottom left. They're just great ways to get kids involved in the lessons, so when a teacher is lecturing or there's some kind of a lesson that they're giving, this is a great way to get the kids involved. They can post to that wall down on the bottom, a Padlet, where you just give them the website and a code to get onto the page and then they're easily able to respond. It's a great way to do an exit slip, too. But the kids love these. The first time I had done a NearPod, that's another one that's a really engaging website. They were leaving and they came back in the next week and they said, "We're going to do that NearPod again?" That's a lot of fun. Also, I just want to make sure I thank the Technology Department because they're such a huge asset. Whenever I call them, I'm having a problem with this, they come right away and fix it. One time, we had a problem with Wi-Fi, they came right away to solve the problem. I wanted to do virtual reality with the kids, right away, someone came down, was helping me try to connect the two, so they're just, they've been really wonderful. Also, I want to make sure I thank Mrs. Yost and Mrs. Tishy, who is in the back over there. They've been absolutely supportive. I'm like the luckiest person in the world, they've been amazing. Crazy ideas I have, whatever it might be, they're there to support me and they trust that, you know, I love that they trust me to do it and that's, thank you very much. And also, thank you for Sheldon Public School System. It's, I just feel like this is such a good fit where I am right now. You embrace the transformation of the library to a learning commons and for making innovation such a priority in the district, so thank you very much.
And now, it's a, it's a proper moment to note that this is the month of the year where we note that board members are appreciated. We appreciate your volunteer work, we know how hard it is, we know it can be contentious and controversial, never easy, and, and the pay isn't very good. Because it's...
We need a raise.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to double your salary, absolutely, yeah. But because, because it's a volunteer position and it's so stressful, it goes without saying that you are appreciated by the community and by all of the team here. And afterwards, on your, as you leave this evening, when the, when the meeting's over, et cetera, we have a token of appreciation for you down in the office that gives you as you leave.
Thank you.
All right, so thank, thank you all.
Okay, next item on our agenda is the public hearing where we allow up to five minutes for any speaker who would like to address the board according to policy 9325. As a reminder, no board of education employee, student or community member should be defamed within public comment. Would anybody care to address the board? When you come up, if you are over 18, please give your name and address so that our secretary can have it. If you are under 18, please give at least your first name.
Hi, my name is Justin Hathley. I live on 103 Lower Drive. So I'm a senior at Sheldon High School and on March 2nd, we received an announcement that our graduation would be moved to Golden Field in Ansonia. And instantly, the students were outraged. They did not want to graduate in a town, not the Rome, especially on Field, not the Rome. It's a tradition at Sheldon High School to graduate on the football field, in the stadium, and it's been that way since the new school opened in 1974. We, all the students wish that we could graduate on our field. And that day, I started a petition on the Care2 website to get graduation back at Sheldon High School. I set up a random goal of 1,000 signatures, just hoping that we would get there and didn't expect much to come out of it. And within the day, we were at 200 signatures and at this point, we're at 1,005 signatures. So we achieved our goal. I have a few copies here I left to pass out. I would just hope that you all can get a chance to read this petition and hopefully it influences your decision to maybe postpone the renovations of the turf field so we could graduate or maybe another accommodation where we graduate somewhere in Sheldon because it's tradition to graduate in our hometown where these students have worked hard for the past periods of their lives, at high school that is, let alone the past, the previous eight years in middle school, elementary school. You know, and it's not even just going to school for several hours today, it's after school with sports, with clubs. I know a lot of people are involved in those, so we spend a lot of time in our school and we embrace that. We would love to graduate in our hometown, on our field where we belong and where we deserve to graduate. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, they're appreciated. We did have a walkthrough today at the field to look with the contractors that have bid to do the work and I had talked to, over a week ago, to the architect who is in charge of hiring the contractors and we, he and I talked and we did come up with a possible plan. I can't guarantee it at this moment, but it's a strong plan that would include in the bid specs, the specs that are used for the contractors, that would include a three-day shutdown of the work, which would allow for graduation to take place. So that is not an absolute guarantee, but I am cautiously optimistic we'll be able to make that happen. All right, thank you.
Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Sensing none, we'll move on. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes we have in our packets, the minutes of the regular meeting of February 28th and the special meeting of March 19th. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
Okay. Motion carries. Communications board, I'm not aware of any. Okay. Superintendent's report and action items. Actually, Dr. Poet, as part of your report, I would like you to make sure that you address what impact the mayor's proposed budget might have on the goal of reaching the top quartile for student achievement.
Very good. Let me begin by saying the strategic planning work is ongoing and is generating some very serious enthusiasm and changes in practice. I am very pleased to announce, and I shared with the board earlier today, the announcement that we're going to be hosting a Saturday afternoon, a huge event. We're going to host it at the middle school, but it's for the entire school district and for the entire community. And I believe that will be on Saturday, the 2nd. Yep, yep. Three to five. It will include music and technology and arts and other reflections of, of the good work that our students are doing and our teachers are doing in the context of strategic thinking towards the future. So we hope that people will be able to set their, set up their schedules so that they can attend that.
Shades of years gone by when PTA council used to sponsor something simple. I had to say that for Arlene.
Okay. I'm glad we're able to do it. Um, with that said, I'd like to, um, introduce to the mic, um, uh, one of our new hires. Some of you know Michael Marotti, um, and, and Doug, um, Doug Washington, Williams, excuse me, that would be better if I said it correctly, thank you, Doug. Um, in any event, um, Mike and Doug are, um, really great, um, high-energy teachers that bring a lot of talent and vision to the work. And they are going to share with you now, uh, an overview of what it means to have esports. We are one of the top schools in Connecticut in esports, but we think that many people don't know what that is. So, we asked the experts to come forward.
So, esports are competitive video games, um, which, when I first mentioned video games in school, a lot of people get a little nervous, like, wait a second, why, why are we doing this in school? Um, but we're gonna talk a little bit about how esports give the same benefits that traditional sports, basketball, baseball, softball, um, foot, all, you know, it gives the same benefits to students, bless you. And, um, so, I'm gonna turn over the mic. Um, we have here, um, a student, uh, in our esports club, Kevin here, so he'll be saying a few words from his perspective at, at the end of this, so, go ahead, Mike.
First of all, glad to be here, glad to be talking about the new innovative thing their district is doing, Michael Marotti. Um, the career and technical education curriculum leader at Sheldon High School and Sheldon Union Union School. And, uh, we basically had a, I had an email that was sent to me in, about late August, and again, a fresh new hire here in the district. And I had an idea over the summer, where I was kind of looking to introduce this to the school. And I've seen it on ESPN, you know, flipping through, and it's, you know, the world championships in a different country, and, you know, the excitement that it generates was just off the charts. And I thought, why not try to bring it to Sheldon? There was an email that was sent from the state, uh, the C I A C and CAS, um, that they were actually forming a esports official league. So, I figured it would be a great way to actually jump on that and, you know, be the, one of the leaders of, uh, the state of Connecticut, not only that, but the country, we'll get into that in a minute. But, uh, yeah, this is gonna be just a quick presentation on esports, what games they're actually playing, and, uh, you know, really what it is and what it's not. So, again, we're gonna build a common understanding of what esports are, uh, build a common understanding of esports can be used as an instructional tool regarding the four Cs and twenty-first century skills, and how esports can be organized and how Connecticut League runs. So, there's actually an official league, uh, up and running, there was a pilot league in the fall, and now there's the spring season with, which culminates with the state championship up in, uh, UConn. So, um, Doug would be able to infill you more about that as we go on through the program. So, the first question we have is, you know, why do we have sports programs in public schools? And I'm not gonna have you guys answer it, but again, it's something to think about and ponder. And what value do sports programs bring to schools? So, these were the first two questions that were actually, um, asked to all of us that were at the initial meeting up at the C I A C in Cheshire. And these were the following responses from a variety of different stakeholders, from technology leaders, uh, you know, administrators, uh, parents, different students that were there, um, that, you know, the reason why we play sports and what they do, what values they bring, and promotes teamwork, teaches life lessons, how to handle success and failure, it crosses borders into different types of communities, builds community, builds leadership skills, promotes risk-taking, it's very fun, value to this school community, reasons for academic success. Uh, always a little fun jab at bragging rights, and, uh, kids learn how to have, uh, time management outside of, uh, their core academic stuff. So, how do sports contribute to the four Cs? So, I, I actually didn't allow Kevin, um, when the time comes, he's one of our, uh, our athletes on our esports team, uh, to talk about, you know, his, how this is all integrated together, how that they communicate, how they're able to collaborate together, how they come up with creativity in scouting reports, and get ready for the next opponent, and how to critically think on the spot, and how to develop those skills and kind of ensure those as they go through. Here are a couple photos of some of our, uh, our teams. Um, we have the League of Legends team is up on the top-left corner, Kevin's actually in that picture, if I'm not mistaken. So, we actually have jerseys that are made up, um, Doug did a great job with getting that organized. So, again, we're trying to treat it as legitimate sport, um, you know, and it's really, uh, the kids are really taking to it, um, they look great. And, uh, again, there's the League of Legends is up in the top-left, the bottom middle is their Overwatch logo, and that's some of our players there. And up on our top-right, there's also a, um, a non-competitive aspect to the club, so it's not just competition. There's also a fun atmosphere where if you're not interested in being on the competition side, again, they can simply go ahead and play, uh, for fun.
Is that their screen names on the back of their shirts?
That's a new question. So, yeah, every student has their own handle, um, that they go by online. So, again, they decided instead of having their last name written on it, they wanted to have their handle put on there as if they were in, uh, the game world that they were in. So, it's kind of a cool little thing that, uh, you know, they, uh, they really, they really tend to like that. And here's another shot of some of the, our, our club members and competitive gamers, um, you know, that they're, uh, that they're interested in. Again, Kevin's the, uh, the tall person at the bottom, uh, that's being held up in the air. So, the benefits for esports students, again, this is kind of why we want to do this, for the, for students. Uh, when using the platform, again, it's a structured, highly accessible community, and there is a lot more than you would think. Uh, not only, not only around the country, but internationally. Uh, it's a safe environment to build teamwork, leadership, and social skills, communicating. Uh, there's actually, believe it or not, scholarships. Uh, those who are not familiar in that, for students that are, uh, quality gamers to go to college, and that has been growing considerably over the last couple of years. And there's, we're gonna see that there's, uh, expected tremendous growth over the next three to five years. Uh, experiential learning for students for certain careers in media, sports management, and other related fields. And again, it's paths for students to be recruited to college or professional teams. Again, Doug would know more than I would regarding this, but, um, I know that the number-one gamer in the world for this is making how much?
Two, two and a half million dollars a year.
So, there is an avenue, um, you know, and there is an avenue to, you know, make a big, pretty decent amount of money if you, uh-
Does that mean you're leaving teaching?
One of my favorite parts of court, and this is no longer applicable.
So, there's a huge market for this, and, and a lot of people have been, you know, really jumping on board. Again, these stats really came from, um, you know, there's projections here, but you can see there's two-hundred-and-sixty esports viewers. Um, you can look at the revenue for growth, it's expected to double in the next three years, so it's already doubled since then, so, um, you know, there's more and more revenue growth coming on. There's more and more users that are playing the most popular games. Uh, again, I'll let Doug get into the game, but as you can see, there's a lot of professional sports teams have already hooked into, uh, the esports world, including the Miami Heat, the Boston Celtics. And again, the NBA has really taken a leap in their regard, so-
And no concussions.
No concussions, no. Physically, uh, you know, the stress will play a little bit, they might break a sweat, but, uh, you know, there's no, there's no physical danger, except for maybe, uh-
Mike, can I ask you a question? I, I've been reading all of the, um, connections to learning and stuff, do you have anything in there about coping if you're losing?
That's actually Doug, who's gonna actually-
Okay, good. Okay.
Yes, yeah.
So, I'm gonna let Doug actually take over for, like, the more, uh, the more hands-on portion, and what we've been doing actually as a club and a team, generally.
Yes, so, uh, currently, the league is run by the Electronic Gaming Federation, their logo's in the top-right. Um, and they're, they have partnered with the C A S, and they're looking to partner with the C I A C to have this sanctioned as an official sport, um, just like any other traditional sport. And, uh, but currently, it's just with C A S, this is the first year that this has happened. Connecticut's the first state in the country to have the governing body of school activities to accept this and sanction it. Um, California, I believe, was right behind us, but we were number one, so, uh-
And we were the fir- we were one of the first eight schools in the state that actually did a pilot league over the fall. So, you know, we were actually one of the leaders in the entire nation, so Sheldon can hang your hats on that for sure, that we were, uh, we were leading the charge in this regard.
Absolutely, go ahead. Uh, so currently, the, I mean, there's so many different video games out there. Currently, the ones that are supported in the league are, they're called Overwatch, League of Legends, and Rocket League. If you have children, I'm sure they've mentioned at least one of these games, uh, more than once. The non-competitive part of our club, um, which is actually very unique, um, the E G F, I've spoken to, with them on many occasions. They're kind of promoting our structure that we have at Sheldon High School for our club, um, to have both the competitive side and the non-competitive side. But our non-competitive side of our club, um, is open to any games, as long as it's rated T or below. We don't want to include any rated M games, um, which are for seventeen and up, uh, students. We keep it, uh, teen, which is, um, seventeen or less, I think, six, or it might be sixteen, thirteen plus, I think it is, so. Um, so we do have this fine balance between the club, which is open to all, and then we have sport, um, our sports team, where we have tryouts, we have team captains, team practices. Um, today, we had two matches with our League of Legends team, which Kevin participated in just, uh, about three hours ago. Um, we won both of them, so we're currently undefeated, um, for our League of Legends team.
So, is this like in the school library or something, that they're taking place in the competition, or?
They're currently using the STEM lab at, at Sheldon High School. I teach out of the STEM lab at Sheldon High School, and, uh, we use the computers, the computer lab there to, to play these games.
And, and there's a, a scheduled time that they're logging on, that other people are there at?
Yes, yes, so that our students get together in the STEM lab and the other teams. So, today, we played Sacred Heart High School up in Waterbury, and they were logging on to their computers in their school and, and connecting online together. The finals will be held at UConn, um, eh, over spring break, I believe it is. So, it'll be live in front of an audience. The winners get, uh, scholarships towards UConn, I believe it's a thousand dollars for each student, so, uh, a lot of opportunities there, so, go. Um, so our competitive teams, depending on the game, um, they're structured differently. So, League of Legends, we have five starting players, Rocket League is three, um, and Overwatch has six starting players. We have two substitutes, minimum for each team. We have assistant coaches, which are students, um, they, they help coach their, their classmates, they run analytics. We spend, Kevin, probably, uh, what would you say, about an hour before our matches today? Hour and a half or so, studying the other team's play style and, and which characters they played as, and, and the best way to, to beat them. Um, we have practices every week, we have, uh, a J V team, which, uh, practices with our main team. And, uh, we can try to get as many different students involved as possible. This spring season, we have forty-one teams total, between the three games across twenty-eight schools. So, uh, Sheldon High School has an Overwatch team and a League of Legends team. We don't yet have a Rocket League team, because that was added in just, uh, just before the season started, and we didn't have enough time to get a team together for this season. But there are a few Rocket League teams throughout the state. And total, there are two-hundred-and-ninety students across the state of Connecticut that are participating. On the competitive side, that doesn't include all the students involved in the casual, uh, social gaming side of, of our club or any other schools that are, have that structure as well. Um, and they, E G, the E G F also offers many opportunities for students to get involved with shoutcasting, which is, uh, you know, the announcer during the sports, like, you know, John Madden, um, would be. But they do this for the games themselves, as they're streamed live online. And, um, so the two-hundred-and-ninety doesn't include all of the other students that are getting involved, that's just who, the number, the solid number we have on those that are actually competing and registered on the teams, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, when we first started, I mean, I wasn't sure how many kids would show up to our first meeting, and we literally had, like, I think it was seventy-five students that showed up. Uh, you know, it was incredible turnout, and, you know, it was mentioned that it was a, another way for students who might not normally be attending the football games, per se, uh, you know, to be involved and, you know, get involved as a school community. So, it's a really nice way to get more kids involved in that. And as you can see, and going across the four Cs, you know, it's building leadership capabilities, it's building confidence and self-esteem. Uh, you know, the kids are gonna have to get creative and how to come up with a strategy, and I know this town is big with football, uh, a big football tradition in town. And you can look at it exactly like the way any football coach prepare their team, and their scouting reports, we have practices, we work on certain drills, and get kids into the proper positions. So, I mean, we really spend a lot of time with it, and, uh, I mean, Doug's done a great job with the kids, and they're really kind of taking to it, so. Uh, you know, we use, um, we're working on, they, we're working on a schedule with E P, uh, E P Statistics to have a more, uh, official analytics position, where, you know, they're really breaking down tendencies and certain things, like, you know, this football, they call on a certain play at a certain time, so we can actually capitalize on mistakes. So, it gets very involved, uh, which is great. And I know Doug was gonna mention something about, uh, the mental health component of gaming as well.
Absolutely, um, so, the next steps for our club, um, since this is the first year this has been a club, we, we do want to bridge the gap between the esports club and the video game design classes that we have at Sheldon High School, which are very popular. Um, I taught one section of it last semester, when I had about, I had a full classroom, it was, I think, twenty-two, twenty-three students in that one video game design class. So, we want to bridge that gap, maybe have students designing video games that are esports club students are then playing and competing against and, and analyzing. Um, so that's what we're aiming to do next. E G F does have a program involved with coding and video game design as well, so we're in contact with them. I, I talk to them probably three or four times every week, um, and those are some of the conversations that we've had several times. Um, we do wish to run community events and fundraisers to support Anxiety Gaming. Um, the E G F is partnered with Anxiety Gaming, we haven't yet reached out to them ourselves, but it is on our agenda. Um, Anxiety Gaming, they offer free resources to those with mental illness, such as depression and anxiety. Um, there, there are many statistics that show among the gaming community, unfortunately, there is a higher percentage of those with mental illness. So, Anxiety Gaming, that's, that's their angle, they're saying, hey, we have a big community which experiences this, we should do something about it. And all the resources they offer are free, they've got numbers you can call if, if you or someone you know are experiencing mental illness, and, and they, they can point you in that right direction to get help. So, um, we, we talk about it, um, in our meetings, time to time, when it comes up. If there, if there's someone they know, they should absolutely contact someone and get, um, the help that, you know, someone might need.
So, mental illness is, is associated with gaming?
Not so much that gaming is caused by it, I believe it's, um, that those with mental illness seem to turn to games. I, I believe it's, it's not caused by the games, it's, it's those, those with mental illness seem to turn towards the games.
Yeah, I would say there's many groups that, you know, there's many areas where people have mental illness, and gaming is one of them. And, uh, you know, they're taking a proactive approach to addressing mental illness, and, you know, as I think we all should in every facet of it.
So, you would say it's an addictive problem?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I would, I, it's, it's not the, it's, again, there's many different avenues where people have mental illness, and, eh, the E G F is recognizing that student, there may be possibilities where players may have mental illness that are playing games, and that they're taking proactive steps in order to help solve those issues with mental illness.
But as a part of the whole thing, I saw with the time management, you're promoting them, limiting their gaming time to do other things in life?
We treat, we do treat it just as any sport, students have to keep their grades up in order to participate, we checked their grades before. It motivates them to keep their grades up. We have had students, um, in the past, who, maybe they were on that borderline, and, and because of the esports club and wanting to participate, they worked very hard, and they were successful in increasing their grades. I don't have any statistics about that ready for you off the spot, but I, we have-
I just, teaching fourth graders myself, and, you know, who didn't do their homework, and well, why not?
Yeah, no, absolutely. We have, just, just before our matches, our teams, uh, our stu- the students that are on the teams are very good about sitting down and, and doing their homework. Um, matches start at three o'clock, the school day ends at two-ten, two-fifteen, so the students come right into the STEM lab right after school, they'll sit down, they'll do their homework, and then they'll jump into the analytics and the, and the practicing right before the match starts.
Yeah, there is a round between over-practicing, you know, and there's, obviously, students study from the first, but it's the same as, you know, football practice.
Exactly.
If you're not on top of your studies, you're not coming to practice, you're not gonna play the match, you know, it's very simple.
And are there, are there other local schools, like, like Valley Bragging Rights or anything, or?
Are you looking in the valley? There's Monroe in there.
What's nearby?
Yeah, I, I can't think of any, oh, but most of the schools go by their, their, their chosen team name, team name, such as-
So, you can't tell all this from the ground?
So, I'm, I'm trying to remember which, which teams-
I know there's a, there's a big pocket of schools over in the eastern, in the area, New London and Norwich.
New Haven, New London.
There's a Farmington school, Notre Dame, West Haven's probably the closest one to here. Um, there hasn't been any actually in the valley yet, so we're awaiting for all new deliveries to jump. We got a pretty good team, so, and with that, I was gonna have Kevin come up and, uh, you know, just talk a little bit about his experiences with the club, you know, why he joined, and, uh, you know, you know, just really kind of pontificate on, uh, you know, why it's important, why he likes to be on the club.
Well, hello everybody, my name is Kevin Lee, I am a, what you would call a filmmaker for the League of Legends team, meaning I play all five positions, as I am a very flexible person. The, um, the League of Legends team is actually very interesting in the fact that with the four Cs, it does actually fill all facets of the four Cs. For communication, it would be kind of like having five people, well, imagine five people speaking at once, but on the same topic, but like comments every single moment, that would be very hard. That's where also the critical thinking comes in, being able to de-fragment and decipher everything in that. That would allow for possible problem-solving, again, critical thinking, understanding communications, understanding your teammates and your friends, but also, at the same time, being able to execute and deliver out the proper- But also at the same time, being able to execute and deliver out the proper plays and actions needed to successfully obtain the victory. Um, uh, the team is very, it, I mean, yes, it's a video game. That's understandable, that's entertaining in itself. However, it's not the actually playing the game that had me interested in wanting to join the team. It was wanting to be around people that also enjoy the same hobby as I do. And just being around a group of friends and having somebody to talk to at the same time, that's very good. And with the supporting of the, uh, Anxiety Gaming, I myself have depression. So being able to use video gaming and actually helping other people now with Anxiety Gaming is, it's very good. It, it makes me feel good and it helps other people feel good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And then one last thing, if anybody's on Twitter, uh, the team does have their own, uh, Twitter handle. Their, eh, the team, our official team name is the S H S, where the guild goes, uh, created by the students. So again, a little fun catch there. But, uh, again, if you're interested, again, you can follow our matches and, uh, you know, see how the kids are doing as we march towards, uh, hopefully see UConn as a state championship.
And what's the cost for all of this? Uh, other than, obviously the kids probably buy their own t-shirts, but.
Um, so the t-shirts, actually we got, um, a very good deal. The, the company we went through sold the jerseys and t-shirts at the cost for them. Um, so the t-shirts were minimal. To actually participate in the league, it was a hundred and fifty dollars a student originally, um, but it's just like any other sports, pay to play. Um, EGF has a financial report, actually reached out to, um, Ed Rap, um, about information about the town. And they were able to reduce the cost of that based on statistics about Shelton. I believe the final price was, it was about, was about ninety-three dollars. But then the, the club actively fundraised, reached out to local businesses for donations, sponsorships. Um, I believe the final cost was seventy-five dollars a student, students.
So self-supporting, basically?
Yeah, absolutely.
And the goal eventually, you know, with supporting efforts, maybe you can get a corporate sponsor, um, you know, and do fundraisers. Hopefully we're looking to offset all the costs and the kids can play for free.
Exactly, exactly. So, um, the, the students work extremely hard to, um, fundraise and, and, uh, we have a fundraiser, actually next week. The, the club is holding a Mario Kart tournament throughout the, throughout Shelton High School, so students can pay to join the tournament. And, um. Join so up, um.
Mine too.
So, um, they get very active. We did have a video, I think it was working.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I could try to explain the video, um, briefly. It was a thirty-second clip taken about four hours ago at our matches, um, against, um, the Sacred Heart High School hearts. And the students, you see the five students on, that were playing that match on the computers side by side, um, but they were constantly shouting back and forth. Go this way, go this way, do this, do this, back off, back off, retreat, go in. Um, the whole time, like, there's not a moment of silence in this thirty-second clip and that's how the games run. And, um, for the League of, League of Legends matches, they typically run about thirty to forty-five minutes long. And it's just constant communication between the students. It, it's amazing. I, I, I wish the video was working, but I literally took it on my phone about four hours ago and, and embedded it in our slideshow. Uh, it doesn't seem to be, be working, but, um, it, like I said, it, it is constant communication. They're constantly working together, developing new, uh, game plans, new, new strategies, studying the other teams extensively. Um, the team that we faced today, um, until today was undefeated, as were we. So we, we spent the past week, the team spent the past week studying their gameplay and, uh, we had two victories against them today. So now our team is, Kev, Kevin's, Kevin's team over here is, is undefeated.
The goal is ultimately to be, eh, for the esports club to be treated just like any other sport, you know, that's, it's gonna be, you know, up on the C I A C website and, you know, to be, uh, in newspapers and, you know, that's kind of where we're headed with that, so.
Could we get a link to, uh, uh, some sample game, uh, video sent to the board?
Uh, absolutely, I can send, uh, that would be great. Uh, I can send some videos of our students playing. The ma, some of the matches, they can't stream every single match, but some of the matches, EGF streams live online and they have several hundred people watching it at any given time. Oh, excellent, our, our League of Legends team is being streamed live next week on Wednesday. Do you remember, I think it was their three o'clock match?
Evening, Chris and Doug, if you're in line, just to be able to see.
Yeah, you can still see videos, but I, I, I can email out, um, a few different links with videos and some of the.
How many, how many times a week do you meet? Or, or is it every day, is it?
So, almost, almost every single day. Um, we have practice on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have our social club meeting on Friday, uh, milestone season, STEM lab on Tuesdays, so we kind of get blocked out on Tuesdays. But then we have our League of Legends matches on Wednesdays and our Overwatch matches on Thursday, so it ends up being four, four days a week, so.
Big commitment.
Yeah, and I will say Doug is, you know, doing this on a volunteer basis currently and he's done yeoman's work, uh, you know, since the start of the year to get this to where it is. So, you know, he's done a fabulous job, being, uh, being here.
He has a coach as well. He's been a very, very good coach. He's been very competent.
Thank you.
Taking other questions?
Thank you.
Cool.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, man, it's a long time. Different world to that, you'll be.
That's okay.
Slaver guess.
It was interesting.
What are you talking about?
Figure out what you're talking about.
Mike, could you, could you hit the projector where it's?
Otherwise I'm gonna be blind.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks again, guys.
Thank you.
Did, just as I finish up my report, I did want you to be aware that we are planning, uh, an upcoming event, which has, we don't have a date yet. But I'm working with our IT department to put together a community forum on protecting personal data. In light of some of the stuff that's been happening, uh, nationally and internationally, uh, we are, um, putting together a, a forum on protection of personal data. So there'll be more information coming your way when we get the details. Uh, Mr. Holden asked me before we had that very interesting presentation, what about the connection between the mayor's budget proposal and the, um, goal that, um, I've been talking about for a while of trying to move our district into the top twenty-five percent of Connecticut districts? Look, those of you who know me know that I, um, see the glass as being half-full and I, I try my best to be optimistic and work hard to make things happen, uh, no matter what, and I will continue to do that. With that said, um, this is a huge challenge. And over the last, uh, ten years, uh, we have been, um, underfunded by, um, over fifteen million dollars um, in terms of what our request was and what we received. It's a fifteen million dollar gap. Now, I know that, um, we spend a lot of time, um, acknowledging what the city has done to help our school district and putting on new roofs and helping us create the STEM lab that you heard the gentleman refer to. And there's a lot of other things, are, are things that merit, um, thanks and gratitude. With that said, uh, it's not enough. It's not enough. It's fifteen million dollar gap is not, um, helping us do what we need to do. Um, our, over the last ten years, our, um, budget has increased in its entirety by about sixteen, uh, percent. Um, this, on the city side, it's increased over twenty percent. So, um, things do go up, costs do go up. Um, I wish they didn't, but they do. Um, and that includes our own homes and, and those of you who run businesses, costs do go up and the cost of education does go up. But we do it at a reasonable rate. Um, I will say this, that, um, the, what would we do with the money in order to achieve the goal of putting our school district into the top seventy-five percent into, excuse me, to the, I'm misspeaking, into the top quartile is what I mean to say. The top twenty-five percent, let me say this correctly. Um, moving beyond the bottom seventy-five percent into the top twenty-five percent. Um, we would use the money to, um, hire some people that would give the support that students need for that increased achievement. That's what other districts do. That's what districts in this region, right around the corner from us do. They provide the kind of support for that middle, uh, that middle-range achiever. Many of you have heard me use that term a lot. It helps that kid to take those net extra steps to, to achieve their potential. And that's what, that's what this work is about. It's about helping kids achieve their, achieve their potential. In my world, in my view, it's not about determining what neighborhood you come from and then assigning you a destiny. No, that's not what the work is. That, that, eh, eh, the work is saying, um, we are here to help kids achieve their potential. And so in answer to your question, um, I am gonna work, um, as hard as I can and our sta, you see our staff, I mean, you see the things going on. There's, there are fabulous things going on in every single one of our schools. We could pick any school and talk about it, and we do and will continue to do that. But, um, that gap is big and it's weighing on us and the hill is getting steeper. And, um, I, you know, I'm gonna need all of your support to help us see what we can do to gently and respectfully, um, nudge the, um, folks at City Hall that allocate funds to, um, help us get a better allocation. And I've been meeting with the mayor as recently as this afternoon, um, to talk about a number of things. I, I'm in regular contact. We have a, a respectful, um, relationship and, and I intend to maintain that. But, um, this gap is real. Um, and eh, when you hear that it's not real or that, you know, it's not true that we're in the bottom, you know, tenth of all spending in terms of districts, that's just fake news. That's real. So I'm gonna work on it. I'm gonna keep my, uh, positive demeanor, um, but, uh, but the hill is getting steeper.
Okay, um, approved field trips, which is for information only. Perry Hill School, uh, has got a trip to Alaska in June of twenty nineteen. Yes, I'm wondering about that as well. Um, do we have anybody in the audience who can clarify that? Ken, are you aware?
It's not Perry Hill School. It's actually, it's being put together, um, by Michelle Piccolo.
It's World Strides. It, it, it's the same field, um.
Same group that went to San Francisco.
Correct.
Okay.
Alaska.
Right, that's, that's correct.
Yeah, there's a planned itinerary.
Can I ask you a question? Yeah, have they tried to get lower prices? Thirty-one hundred is high right now. Triple A has it for twenty-one hundred thousand dollars less.
They've already, look, I just got the brochure today. So, it's really scheduled toward an itinerary that World, uh, Strides, um, puts together. I mean, it, it's, I could show you the, the itinerary. They're going to Denali.
It's a, it's a trash, it's a Denali.
Well, I just kind of looked at it according to what Triple A, because how about Peter Sonnenwagen works with that? And it's very similar to what they offer. So I was just thinking for a thousand dollars less.
Well, I think, I think that, that, that's the, um, company that most of the school systems use. And probably because they've had not only suc- success, but it's been very safe and, you know, and I think, and I think that's probably why.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But, you know, if you can get a cheaper price, I'll go.
Yeah, I think it includes guides and things of an educational oriented.
And all their meals and their bussing and everything.
It is, it is a lot of money.
I just, I just looked at thirty-one hundred and I thought, how many kids, they'd all love to go, but how many could really afford that to go, you know?
No, they need, they pay for it.
Yeah.
But I like the idea of the trip and I like the place, so, you know, I am for that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay, uh, let's move on to board action items. Items presented for a vote. Consideration board to accept on behalf of Long Hill School a contribution of four thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars toward the purchase and delivery of a storage container for Long Hill School as specified.
Someone?
Is there a second second?
Discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Andrea, maybe you can answer some questions for me. Um, I'm wondering if it has been looked into for liability for attractive nuisance? I know playground is used quite a bit. I know they claim on garbage pails. I mean, it's, you know, summer's coming.
For the storage container?
Yes.
Um, I do know other schools in the district do have storage containers, something there similar to food testing.
Okay.
Um.
Who?
High school.
High school.
Okay. But they don't have a playground that would draw kids in.
Booth Hill has one also.
Oh, okay.
Um, we did.
I didn't see that.
Okay.
Get in your car and drive up tomorrow.
Other schools do. We also had, um, our head custodian along with John Calhoun involved.
Okay.
Um, we also looked at what would be the most sturdy type of storage container, what would be, um, weatherproof, you know, whether it's airtight, um, also be able to hold up. Would it be something like a shed that would be flimsy that could potentially, you know, be more of a risk? So, um, this is what we have looked at, again, with the custodians and looking at what other schools had done. And we figured it was, or determined was probably the, the best solution for lack of storage. And that we would be working, you know, with my head custodian and also with John Calhoun as the proper placement for it at Long Hill Road, replaced it in the back of the school.
Okay.
Is there any site preparation that has to be done?
I don't believe so, but I can double check with Calhoun. I was not in the impression that there was.
What, what type of objects are you gonna be placing in there? There's no.
Do we really need to go into that deep in the weeds? I mean.
Fine, I will know. How's that? Is that, no, I, I have questions. I'm concerned about the furniture that's gonna be put in there. You, there's, there's no temperature or humidity control and I'm concerned about the potential for growth of mold. So, so I'm asking questions.
Okay.
Isn't that our responsibility to ask questions?
I think it's the professionals that are on our staff's responsibility to make sure that things like that are taken care of. We're really in charge of things like policy.
We're held responsible for everything that happens in the school, policy or other. They come to us. We're the elected officials. We represent the citizens and it's our job to oversee.
I just think that's getting into the weeds.
Can, can I make a suggestion that might, um, be a compromise? Um, if we could at, have questions like this asked in advance, we could receive an email or a telephone call in advance of a meeting. We could, um, pose the questions, um, that are very reasonable, by the way, Mr. Tuello, and then we could come to a meeting like this with answers. That might, that might provoke more questions, but at least you'd have some basic answers ready for you when you get to the meeting.
I, I'm concerned a little bit about putting staff members on the spot with questions.
I don't think putting them on the spot.
If you're not expecting to be questioned about something, you get questioned.
Andrea's cool. She can answer everything. She had the best cooperating teacher, so I'm just telling her.
That is.
I can't speak to what I know if that's, you know, there might be some stuff that I can't specifically answer, but I, I can't speak to what I know. A lot of the stuff that we're looking to put in the storage container is stuff that's stored on the stage at school, which over the course of the summer and the hot months isn't conditioned either. It's very hot on the stage. The stage is filthy and dirty. So we're looking at taking stuff like, you know, and we don't have a lot of equipment like desks because honestly we're using them all, pretty much. But it's more stuff like, um, some desks, some bookcases, some tables, um, you know, whole things that have to get heated out and cleaned out. But it's more taking a lot of the stuff that's accumulated, old gym and recess stuff that's on the stage. It's putting that stuff into the storage container to really utilize the stage, which at this point that stuff is, in a way, getting damaged because kids are playing sports in the gym, balls are getting thrown onto the stage, it's hitting equipment and other things in there. So it's more of, um, storage items, like some desks, some plastic chairs. Um, we have some of the older little chairs that they would use, that they used to use in kindergarten, like those cube chairs, those kinds of items just to kind of get them off the stage. We don't wanna throw them out, but we wanna be able to utilize the stage, which is something we haven't been able to do since I've been there. Um, I could find out more specific information if you did have any follow-up questions. I'd definitely look into it.
Any other questions?
Chris, could, would it be possible for you to talk to the other principals that have these?
Mm-hmm.
And ask them how often they go in and out of them and to see if there is a mold problem?
Yes.
I think Dave had a really good point. It's contained, it's hot, and I'm sure they're not clean before they put them into the container. So any slurps that are there?
Maybe they should be.
Yep. I, I can certainly speak to the principals. I can tell you that I have, um, had occasion to visit, um, a number of these containers around the district. And it is a, um, a, a wide variety of conditions that they're in. And there's been some discussions with Mr. Calhoun about, um, getting rid of some of them, some of them that we pay rent for, by the way.
Oh.
Um, which is something we'd like to cease doing. Um, and, um, and, you know, there, there are some, there are some legitimate uses as I think, um, they're, um, described very well. And there are some times where I think there are, there's, um, what I would call junk that needs to be removed.
Thrown out.
Yeah, and, um, so we're, we're, I, I can, I can look into that report back.
Okay, so then, um, can I amend the motion and say, can we table this until we get more information and come back to it? Andrea, you don't have a deadline?
Absolutely, and then we, we could follow, just to, just so you know, to have a fight set this. We did pick the container that is air and watertight. Um, there was a bunch of different containers that could be picked up for purchasing. So we did do, the custodian did do a lot of research, what would be the best, you know, to, to maintain the stuff. Um, but any other further follow-up that you may? Any other further follow-up that you may, just let me know.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea.
Okay, there has been a motion to table the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. We need two-thirds to vote in favor of tabling. Otherwise, motion proceeds. All in favor of tabling, raise your hands.
Right.
We have three. Motion fails. Okay. Sensing we are ready to vote, all in favor of moving item one, approving item one. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Is that what we just voted on?
This is voting on the motion itself.
Oh.
Okay. Okay, are you opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay.
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining. Okay, so the motion carries.
Mark, can I ask you? Can we still get that information?
We can certainly still get the information.
Okay, thank you.
And essentially, my concern is primarily Dave, that I don't want staff members to be uncomfortable at board meetings if they show up and they get questions that they aren't expecting. If we can prepare them ahead of time with what the questions will be, that would be fine. Okay. Item two, consideration of the board to accept on behalf of Long Hill School a contribution of two thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents for the purchase of four new water fountains for Long Hill School as specified.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Just a quick point. When I was at an event a couple of weeks ago, they had one of the water fountains that can be used to refill water bottles. They're a real good idea.
They also have them at the universities.
Yes.
Didn't this come up with finance?
It's finance, yeah.
Well, it made it onto the agenda here, so you can take it off your report.
Okay. Sensing we're ready to vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of the board to approve the graduation requirements for the classes of 2022 that have been reviewed.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of the board to approve the Connecticut Seal of Bilinguality proposal that has been reviewed.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of the board to approve the Shelton High School Diploma of Distinction proposal that has been reviewed.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Consideration of the board to approve the request of the Shelton High School Girls' lacrosse team to conduct fundraising activities during the 2017-18 season as presented.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Sensing none.
Yes, thanks. Discussion on the lacrosse team. On item number three on your paper, it says, this is confusing to me. GoFundMe, each family will send out an email. So, does this match our new policy about GoFundMe? Can it be the lacrosse coach that does the one donation, fund me page, and then people can give? It's a little confusing. It says each family will send out.
I think, my interpretation is that there is one GoFundMe campaign, but all of the family members are asked to contact their friends and relatives, saying, hey, please support this. Does that...
That's how it works.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
All right. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Sensing we're ready to vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments by the board chair? Okay, well, we had the budget and presentation, and I am going to say, don't panic. It is way too early for that. I'm not going to suggest that any people look to start picketing the Board of Alderman or anything like that, because I don't think that would be an effective move at this time. What it is time to do is to get other people aware of and interested in the problem, and to encourage people to have reasonable, friendly, and respectful conversations with Alderman to help them understand what our needs are and why they exist. If we do that, hopefully, we'll have some progress. I think it's something that we really need to be working on, and the more we can do to get more people aware of it. When we had the full-day kindergarten initiative a few years ago, there were hundreds of parents who became interested in that program, and ultimately, they had a huge impact on making sure that we were able to offer full-day kindergarten to our students. This time, really, it is different than most other times, because really, just about every kid in our district is going to be impacted by not having an adequate budget for next year. And so, let's get the word out to people, let's get them interested, and take it from there. Reports of standing committees, teaching and learning.
Mr. Chairman, we did not have a March meeting due to weather, and then it was decided that we would hold our next meeting in April, on April 17th at 4:00 P.M. Our agenda items are jobs sharing at Perry Hill School, Sunnyside Student Ambassadors, and Project Excel.
Okay, fine. Finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our finance committee met on March 19th. Our finance director, Ed Drap, gave a year-to-date object summary report and stated that all expenses are running according to budget or within budget. John Calhoun gave a comprehensive report regarding work being done or completed at our facilities, and you already, we already voted on, but in the report, I had indicated that Long Hill School was going to be doing fundraising to replace water fountain with the new one to make it feasible to have bottles filled. The current ceramic water fountains will be switched out for newer ones, and also, Mr. Calhoun provided us with an outline of the goals and objectives that he hopes to accomplish for April. Under old business, Dr. Colette reported that he, Ed Drap, and Board Chairman Mark Holvin have been out doing budget presentations to the PTOs. A presentation was also made to the residents at Aspetuck Village. Plans are in the works for a presentation at the Shelton Senior Center. I don't know when, but I don't have a date on that. Dr. Colette and Ed Drap and the mayor, as Dr. Colette has already mentioned, they have had four meetings so far regarding transportation for next year. Regarding non-recurring capital costs and capital expenses, Ed Drap suggested that he, John Calhoun, and Gary Di Fallupo, and a board member from the finance committee meet and elaborate on the issues that are on the list. Then the issues can be prioritized and categorized. Other than that, my only comment personally is to commend our finance director for the innovative way he prepares, organizes, and presents the financial report in booklet format. Again, I asked Ed, not all members of the board get it, but anybody that was at the meeting got one, and if anyone would like one, Mr. Drap says they can stop by his office and pick one up. But again, this is a very professional way, the way it was presented from what we've had in the past. So, my thanks personally on behalf of the committee is to thank you for a rather professional job. Well done. End of my report.
Okay. Policy committee.
Policy also did not meet in March due to weather and other calendar constraints, so we will also meet on the 17th following teaching and learning, and we will continue working on our social media policy.
Public relations and outreach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we also did not have a meeting in March, given challenges that we've been facing. We also don't have one scheduled for April with upcoming breaks and other travel that's happening. What I can tell you is that Mrs. Gadas and I have spoken about some different opportunities. We're also talking about what the structure of this committee looks like, trying to work through that as we're sort of just getting that off the ground. Some of the things that we're looking at are in regards to budget, how that will be communicated out to the community, but also some sort of easy wins in terms of being able to better engage the public and bridge communication gaps that might exist between the board and the general community.
Okay, thank you. All righty. Reports of special committees, CES.
CES representative council met on March 1st. Legislative report indicated that CES, like all other cities and municipalities, has felt the impact of the state budget. With regard to CES funding, the magnet school funding, according to the commissioner's office, is forecasting additional cuts to the CES reimbursement in this current year for magnet school funding. Another seven percent, bringing the two-year total 10% reduction, or $200,000. So, even our alliance is feeling the budget cut. Dr. Pickoff, like Dr. Colette, is having budget meetings with each CES leader to determine their division and program needs. By that, I meant that Dr. Colette is meeting with his administrators to determine the needs here in Shelton. Last year, the CES lobbyists will be attending our June Rep Council meeting to provide us with a wrap-up on the current legislative session. I'll forward that information to you in June. CES was also awarded a grant under the State Schools Safety and Security Program in the amount of $668,209. Lastly, Mike Reagan, Reagan...
Can we have that number again?
Yes, $668,209.
Okay.
Lastly, Mike Reagan, who is the CES director for the Division of Special Ed, wrote an article called "A False Sense of Security." The article addresses the fact that the attention of school districts across the country has been unavoidably redirected from the usual business of education to that of school safety. Again, I have given that article to our secretary. She will fix it up and send it out to all of our board members. It's something worth reading.
Okay, thank you.
Respectfully submitted.
Any movement on replacing Dr. Pickoff with the chairman?
No, I didn't allow, I said it last time, but nothing yet.
Nothing.
All right. We have no new business under unfinished business. We will address the mid-year evaluation and get that arranged soon. For your information, we have the vacancy reports, staff stipend actions, and the enrollment report. Highlights? Anyone? Yes.
We have two Shelton High graduates who are featured in television shows right now.
Really?
We have Eddie Levy, and they're both within the last 10 years. Eddie Levy is one of the regulars on AP Bio on NBC, and he came up through the drama club circuit. And Elie Desatels, who was in the marching band, is signed up for 10 episodes of the new show Rise. So, they're both Shelton High graduates.
My, one of my students. We had drama in first grade.
I would just like to point out to the board and also to the community, if they don't know, we have a teen tech club, and they have been coming, or will be coming, at least once a month to the Shelton Community Center and providing all kinds of tutorial help, one-on-one with our seniors, learning about computers, iPads, cell phones, and their work. I happened to be there last Tuesday. Today is Wednesday, Tuesday, and they were there working, and it's a waiting list to get in. They can only take so many at a time. So, again, another avenue of our students working in the community and what our school system is producing in terms of these students. Unfortunately, Dr. Colette, to add to something that you said, it's unfortunate that we do not have, our city officials, at least one or two, attend these meetings, or the meetings when we have presentations by our teachers, so that we're not just verbalizing, they can see firsthand what's going on in our school system.
That's for sure.
So, I just want to go on record to say that I'm disappointed that they're not here, especially during budget time.
Anyone else under highlights?
I just wanted to say something, Mark. And it has to do with the graduation issue, and I know Dr. Colette has reached out to the architect as he explained to us. But I wish the community would understand that the project is not the Board of Education's project. We have nothing to do with it. We have nobody on the building committee. We have absolutely no control over the building project. It's happening on school grounds, but it is totally a city project run by the city's building committee, and we have no say on any. We can ask, but we have no control whatsoever about the timing, about when things get done. We can only work around what they give us.
Agreed. Yes?
I just want to add, since we're here under highlights, how proud I've been feeling of our school and our students and our district. I was extremely impressed from the way that the walkout a couple of weeks ago went, the way that the students organized it, conducted themselves, the support that they received from our staff and our administrators. I think it's incredibly impressive that a young man stood up tonight and had a petition to share that he had started for something that he felt was important, and I'm just, I'm proud of our youth and the support that they're getting from the school system to stand up and speak their mind when they have something to say.
Anyone else for highlights? Okay, I have a few things.
They're all robotics.
Yeah. Okay, we had two robotics competitions, one in Waterbury where we were undefeated the entire match, and that resulted in our team being ranked 19th in the world, which is pretty amazing. The following week, we were at Fairfield University, where unfortunately, some of the teams we were paired up were not quite as skilled as we were, and so, we still ended up on the number-one ranked alliance, but our alliance came in second at the end of the day. I also attended the, for a brief time, the Winter Percussion Event a couple of weeks ago, where our percussion group performed "Hero," and they were impressive. I was really pleased to see them. The kids were really into it. I didn't see the other groups other than one. I was disappointed to hear we came in third, but all I can say is the ones that beat us must have been insanely good, because our group was fantastic. Let's see, had the opportunity to read at both Mohegan School and Aspetuck, or not Aspetuck, SIS, and that was a fun time. Aspetuck Village, we had the meeting with the members there, and we discussed the budget. The people who were there were very receptive to what we had to say, and I think that's a good thing. I also attended a Unified Sports Program in Waterbury, and that was an amazing thing to see. They're done with basketball now, but they're going to be starting the Unified Sports for track pretty soon, and if you can get a chance to show up, that's really an amazing program that we have, where students who have special needs are paired up with students who don't, and they compete together, and it's just an incredible thing to see. Upcoming, we have in Plainside at Perry Hill School next week, and that's something that I intend to show up and take a look at. Robotics is competing on the weekend of the 7th and 8th in Hartford at Hartford's Public High School. We do have our budget interview on April 19th, and it would be great if everybody can attend that. And also, I'll mention on the new finance reports, they look real glitzy and fancy and so forth, but as you would expect, Ed's found a way to do it with less paper. So, we're actually paying less to produce them, and it is good, useful information, so thank you very much. There is nothing further on our agenda, so we are adjourned. Thank you.